This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Great, so I'm seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the, the special meeting of the Regional School Committee at 5:33 PM, and we'll begin with roll call attendance. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Baker.
Baker present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer present.
And McDonald present. Thank you all.
While we're waiting, just, I think we should say that's being the whole thing live and broadcast on Amherst Media.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
I've neglected, I've forgotten to say that at our regular, our, our regular meetings as well, so thank you for the reminder. This, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on Amherst Media Channel 15, as well as on Amherst Media's streaming website.
And thanks to Amherst Media for being such a good partner with us. While we're waiting, I also, if it's okay with the chair, just want to share, I think I mentioned it before on screen, but I want to share it on screen, that there's a Pelham School Committee tonight at 6:30, so I will be departing this meeting at 6:25, not because I don't enjoy the company, but, but because I have another meeting to prepare for and get the platform set up, and I know for Margaret, she'll have to leave, not sure, not soon, not shortly after that, but I just wanted to say that upfront, so that when I leave, if there's conversation going, I don't interrupt anyone to say that, so I'll be able to be online till about 6:25.
I will turn it over to Ms. Cunningham to facilitate and get started whenever you think we're ready.
Okay, I see there's a forum of the school committee, but I'm wondering from either Tiffany or Karen, if you know if there are more people who will be joining from the APEA? There are, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I left and then I hit the wrong button to, I suspect that might have happened.
Okay, so we will take a few moments and wait for the rest of individuals to join us. Okay, so I see that Ms. McGee, the president, has joined, so we will get started. Welcome everyone, and thank you again for coming together for this meeting. Last week, we began a conversation that ended on a positive note. We discussed individual and perhaps collective decision-making processes, and came to the understanding that many of you make decisions based on either your constituents, the needs of the community, the needs of educators, and the needs of students. And also, I recall the APEA talked about the democratic process that they also use with their decision-making process. So, in addition to that, we talked about misconceptions that both organizations wanted clarified. One was that teachers don't want to be in school, the other was that the school committee doesn't care. Then our final prompt last week talked about how can we get staff and students back to school safely? So we ended on a very positive note, because the words creativity, flexibility, and trust was mentioned in that conversation. Now tonight, well, when we left that conversation, the APEA was going back, and they had a survey to review on Monday. And so on Monday, the APEA informed the school committee that there was no mandate from their membership to reopen negotiations, but yet they proposed two side letters to assist into the return to school for two student groups. Then on Tuesday, the school committee voted and passed a proposal that directed the superintendent to, the words were, "Develop and implement a plan for the return, or the in-person return to learning with staff who were willing to volunteer to work in person." So now, before we continue with today's conversation points, I need to review the norms from last week, and you staying on this call is your way of signifying your agreement to abide by these norms. So one of the norms was to assume positive intentions on behalf of everyone on this call. One person speaks at a time using I statement, or we statements, if you're talking on behalf of your organization. We're going to listen in order to understand, we're going to focus on solutions, and we will accept and expect non-closure. So with that being said, I'm sure there are a lot of feelings from many of you on this call today, with all the things that happened this week that I talked about. Some of the words that I heard from individuals, not just educators, but just individuals who either emailed or called, were that they felt blindsided, unsupported, and apprehensive. But I also heard the words from individuals that they felt hopeful, inspired, and heard. And many said that they're ready to hear what was going to take place with this call, because they're hoping that we can make some strides. So with that being said, I would like to hear from all of you, starting with the union president and the school committee chair. And the question or the prompt that I'm going to ask is, I'd like to hear your words as to how you felt with the developments that occurred this week. And how do you think the school committee and APEA will be able to meet the goal of collaboration? To have staff and students returned safely. So when you are answering, please state your name and your position, so that everyone looking on can know and understand where you're coming from when you're speaking and who you are, okay? So with that being said, we'll start with Lamika McGee.
Hi. Hello, everyone, my name is Mika McGee, and I am the APEA president. And I, as usual, come with a prepared statement, so I'll just go ahead and do that, and it's directly related to your question. So, we requested the previous meeting with you under the direction of our membership to improve communications between the school committee and APEA. Since that time, our membership has given us another directive to present side letters for limited discussion as a step to move forward in meeting the needs of students who cannot access the remote learning, even with the awesome remote instruction that our teachers have been providing. These are the two mandates we have at this time from our membership. We're deeply concerned that the SC, that the school committee sent an email directly to our membership regarding a bargaining issue, especially considering that we are in the process of improving communication. We did poll our membership prior to this meeting, and these are some of the the issues that we got back, that the school committee, oh, we need to acknowledge that the process has become broken from the school committee's end. That there are political incentives, they have political incentives, incentives that teachers do not have. People in power need to recognize their power, white supremacy culture, and sense of urgency. Voluntary doesn't necessarily mean voluntary for everyone. We do want to talk about the side letters, that's where we are based on the mandate of our members. This takes time, and there's a process. Further media discussion erodes the trust necessary to make this complex process work. And so this is some of the feedback that we got from our membership. Right now, we're looking forward to scheduling a time with the superintendent to discuss the side letters to continue the process of meeting the needs of our most vulnerable students.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald, the floor is open.
Thank you. Just to recap, and I'll look for you to nod, Ms. Cunningham, to recap the questions. How I felt about the developments this week? And how can we, as a group, this group on this call, the APEA and the school committee, collaborate or meet the goal of collaborating, is that correct?
Yes, I just want to pause, I saw someone else just join.
Is it okay if I say something? Just jump in. It looks like two people got, perhaps they asked for a way to stream this meeting, but instead accidentally got the link to this meet. So you're only supposed to be here if you are on this meeting, if you are a member of the executive board of APEA or the school committee, thanks.
And if there's someone the APEA feels like shouldn't be here, you can perhaps put that in the chat, because I'm the, as the person who has, oh, there we go, it seems maybe like it's resolved. Thank you, Karen, just whatever I can do to help, if there's someone, you know, that I wasn't sure was on the executive board, my apologies for not catching that sooner.
Before we go further, I, maybe I missed something in the chat, I see a Carol C.H., is she supposed to be here also?
She left.
Yeah, she left. Thank you, okay. Okay, we can continue, thank you.
So to, to answer the first question, and I'm using, I'm talking about my own feelings. I have to admit, I was disappointed with, with the news in your email on Monday about, but, I mean, I say disappointed, because that's truly how I felt, I was really hopeful that we would be able to come back and negotiate around, around new metrics to meet the needs of our, our community, our broader community. But I will say that coming out of the meeting last week and hearing our discussion and sort of how, how you all make decisions, and how sort of the decision-making happens within your, within your organization, really sort of gave me that insight to understand sort of how you came to that, how you came to that conclusion. And so I found that actually really helpful, so I, you know, I stayed in disappointment and didn't go to any other sort of negative or unproductive feelings, because I, I really truly, that insight from our conversation last week about how, you know, the, I wrote down a quote, and I can't remember, I apologize, who said, I don't remember who said it, but, you know, trying to come to just collective decisions with which every one of your members can live with, that, that really stuck with me, and so that is the lens through which I understand the, the decision and the message that you sent us on Monday. But I, but I have to be honest, it was really, it was still disappointing. I appreciate that we have sort of this open line of communication and exchanging the emails, and so that also, so again, even with disappointing news, and even if we don't agree, and, or even strongly disagree, and sort of what we did, I think that the, the message in the email was very candid, and I thought very authentic, and I really appreciated that. And I think, you know, so long as we can continue conversations, even if we're, you know, in strong disagreement and continue to respect the norms that Ms. Cunningham outlined at the beginning, I think we can really make a difference. You know, we're not going to agree, we're not going to end up in the same places all the time, and I understand that better now. And the other thing, you know, in talking with, so, family members or others in the community about our decision-making process, I mean, one of the, I think you mentioned that, Ms. McGee, in your opening statement, is, you know, the way we make our decisions is very, very different. We're, we're bound by sort of this parliamentary, you know, Roberts rules, and, and sort of the approach of how we, how we make decisions as a body, and that's like dramatically different from how your board and your organization makes decisions. And, and we sort of have to hold that, and, and just recognize that and acknowledge that that's going to be a challenge for, at every step of the way, when we're trying to collaborate going forward. And then to answer the second question, how do we meet the goal of collaboration? I, like, I just want to say, you all showed up, we all showed up, and that is, in my mind, amazing. And that's how we collaborate, is we keep, we keep this door open, we keep talking, even when we're really disappointed or hurt in sort of decisions and actions that others of us take to keep that line of communication going. And, you know, one of the things we talked about last week was, was sharing ideas, and you know, whether it's through side letters or planned development, however, however we move forward, that, you know, this, the idea of identifying teachers who are willing and interested in teaching in person, and we started with the, you know, with the higher needs group, working together and talking about ideas of how we can make that happen, and, and coming to some, you know, we may not always agree on exactly how to implement that, but I think, you know, using these conversations that we're having as a way to share those ideas and bring those ideas forward, and then just also being comfortable with the fact that we're going to make different decisions, and, and come to different places at times, and hopefully, we will all have felt heard and, and that the ideas are respected and and ideally represented in sort of where we land on solutions.
Thank you both for your answers to that question or to that prompt, and now the floor is open for any member of either the APEA or the school committee to also respond to that, I will repeat it again. It says, "I would like to hear your words as to how you felt with the developments that occurred this week, and how do you think the school committee and APEA will be able to meet the goal of collaborating to have staff and students returned safely? Please state your name and position when responding." So the floor is open for any of the two organizations to speak. Ms. Jagdish. You're on mute.
I'm Mangalajuk Deesh, I teach second graders at Wildwood, and I am the APEA co-chair. I'm really seeing something very different here when we meet together, and then what I see happening in school committee. I really felt like the spirit of collaboration that we were building with school committee was seriously fractured by school committee's actions on Tuesday. That action and the subsequent letter directly to ARP staff, I really feel like are a huge violation of the trust that we were hoping to build. I, and I have to be honest, I really don't see a future for collaboration between APEA and school committee. If school committee continues these kinds of tactics, making decisions without us, and then sending something out to our membership, is not collaboration in my mind. In our last meeting, we were asked to assume positive intentions, and I'm not seeing those positive intentions here, and I'm having a really hard time assuming positive, positive intentions here, when what happens after these meetings that we have together doesn't reflect that. And I'm really hurt that school committee didn't reach out to us. We were going to have a meeting two days after school committee's meeting, and this is where we thought that, that collaboration and working together could really happen. And, um, school committee decided not to wait and talk with us, and went ahead unilaterally, so that's how I'm feeling right now.
Thank you for stating that. If I'm hearing you correctly, you need to be able to build and feel like there's real, actual trust from the other end, so that you can feel like you're able to collaborate, and it's something that's genuine, is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right, the floor is still open, any member from the school committee or APEA who's willing to speak. Also, please make sure you state your name and your position. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, Peter Demling, Amherst and, Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. So, you know, a little bit on how I felt, I mean, disappointed, I think would be a pretty, I'm not sure how I could, it was very disappointing to hear that, that we can't at least start talking about changing the MOA. I, we, we got again, a massive amount of public comment from our families. And vast majority of it wasn't saying, "You need to change the MOA in this specific way," it was saying, "Please start the talks with the APEA about changing it," and you know, the request was made a while ago, and so to have that not moving forward shuts a major door towards potentially getting kids back in, and so, you know, that was really hard, however, you know, I want to, I want to honor and respect what, what Ms. Jag just said, that's very difficult to share in a public body like this, and I think one of the biggest problems with challenges, I should say, with resolving conflict is just to identify the conflict and, and be authentic with it. So I, I really appreciate hearing that. You know, in terms of what Ms. Cunningham was saying about focusing on solutions, and the second part of this question about how can we meet the goal of collaborating to meet needs, you know, where can we find this collaboration, so you know, the, the end of the, the, the motion, the, the action that we passed instructs the superintendent to work closely in collaboration with the APEA leadership in implementing the voluntary return, and, you know, when I read the APEA statement, it did start to talk about specifics, about concerns about protections for, for staff, and, so just in terms of, you know, specific concerns, I guess I'd want to hear a little, I would appreciate if, hearing a little more about that, so that we could understand and then address those concerns, so when we, you know, protections can mean a lot of things. There's a lot of, you know, safety guidelines and protocols that were worked out by a lot of people on this call during, that are in the MOA, but, you know, the distancing, the ACH, the protocols for when there's a positive case, et cetera, et cetera. But, I mean, my, my understanding would absolutely still be in place in this kind of volunteer plan, but, so maybe it's those kinds of things that, that you're thinking about when you say protections, maybe it's additional things. But in terms of, you know, that practical implementation, about, you know, what are those concerns with this kind of a plan? I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to hear that.
Thank you. So once again, the prompt is, I would like to hear your words as to how you felt with the developments that occurred this week, and how you think the school committee and APEA will be able to meet the goal of collaborating to have staff and students returned safely. What I've heard so far is that more genuine trust is needed, my apologies, Ms. Baker, you may go.
So, I'm Karen Baker, I am a teacher at Summit Academy and the vice president of APEA. At the last meeting, you know, a week ago, I felt hopeful and excited. Some of the things that I heard that seemed particularly positive was that people were using words such as, "Let's be creative, let's be flexible," and what I heard was, "We're going to, you know, in an informal way, start to throw out some thoughts about, I'm not even sure what, but I thought it would be along the lines of what we said when we suggested the agenda, which was something along the lines of exploring the possibility for meeting the needs of students whose needs are not currently being met, something like that." And, you know, it seemed like we started off really well, and so then I was confused, I felt very confused that that wasn't seen as a positive process by people, apparently, because rather than continue the communication that we had started, the communication went directly to the staff of the school district, and with very specific directives about what staff should do and what the administration should do. So I, I don't understand how that is collaboration. And finally, we, you know, part of my confusion too, is we offered two side letters, which we haven't gotten responses from you on, we're not sure what your thinking is on that at all. It sounds like you're not interested in them, because it sounded like what you proposed has nothing to do with them, I may be wrong, and I'd like to hear about that in some context, but while we, while we said we don't have a mandate to to open the MOA, we are offering the option to negotiate by presenting the side letters, and we are discussing, and we proposed exploring more possibilities. So we're not closing doors here, we want to follow a process, which I thought was understood. And, you know, we may still be interested, although we are also taken aback and wondering if this process is really real.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. I believe the response that you're looking for, and the response to some of the thoughts that Mr. Demling had, will come through the answers to my next prompt. At this time, I saw Ms. Spitzer.
Thank you, Dorian. Sorry, Ms. Cunningham. It's been a hard week, I will echo that I similarly felt disappointed when I heard that the negotiations weren't going to reopen regarding the MOA. I've also just been feeling very torn, because I hear, and as a, I'm a parent, and I I've worked with them, hearing many parents in our community saying loudly that they are interested in in-person learning, and I know there's a large segment of the population in our town who has opted out of in-person learning, and, you know, they're not calling us and telling us, you know, about their happiness with the remote learning, and I have, and I want to, you know, echo again, that I do believe the teachers have been working probably harder this year than any other year, in, you know, performing excellently with, with remote learning, but I still hear members of the community who feel like remote learning is not working for them, and so I hear those voices loudly, and I am also feeling really worried, I guess, about the relationship between our teachers and our community, and specifically the school committee and the APEA. And so I'm just, I've been very much torn, because I do value this relationship, I did have positive feelings coming out of last week's conversation, and I was hoping that we could take things a little slower than I think they moved, but again, want to just echo, I'm feeling like collaboration will only happen if we keep talking to each other, and so I'd like to see if we can keep showing up, and I'm going to do my part to continue showing up, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Spitzer. Once again, the floor is still open for any APEA or school committee member to speak. Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, I just have to preface everything that I have to say right now with the fact that this is the hardest week for anyone to ask me how I feel about this week, right? As we, as we saw at the school committee, Dr. Morris explained to folks that, that I'm dealing with, with folks that are close and near and dear to me, getting ready to be furloughed, right? So my week started off with disappointment. Just, just like you all thought that we were just collaborating. Just, just like you all thought that we were at this collaborative point. And it's not, it's not your fault. You don't, you don't. You guys, you guys had a mandate, right? Like, I mean, you were looking for a mandate, right? You have a democratic process and it worked out the way it did, right? I'm disappointed in that. I'm also still optimistic, right? At no point did I think that we were going to be at loggerheads for this long period of time, come kumbaya it out for an hour and then that we were going to be on the same sheet of music, right? Like, it's going to take time, it's going to take effort and it's not going to be easy. And I think for us to be, you know, collaborative, we're going to have to understand that there's going to be bumps. We all need to keep our eyes on the prize, right? And focus on what's important. But yes, as far as feelings in this week, this week sucked. That's how I feel.
Ms. Thibodeau? Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Ms. Thibodeau?
Ben, I think I can echo the same comment about how much this week has stopped for a number of reasons. But I guess what I'm wondering is what, what is the school committee's hope going forward at this time? With specifically with this group? I think we, at the start of Monday, we had hoped to bring forward two proposals of ways, potential ways to get moving. And now I'm, I'm kind of sitting at this meeting at a loss for what next steps look like. So I'm hearing that from you also, I think will be really helpful for us.
So Ms. Thibodeau, we will answer that in the next prompt. But with this one, we're just talking about, you know, the, what was stated in your words, how you felt with how things went this week. Ms. Dancer?
Margaret Stancer. I'm a representative from Palom and I'm on the regional committee. I have difficulties, I get pretty emotional here when I'm trying to talk in front of people like this. So I guess I will just say, um, you know, would love to see the kids back in school. I was torn at the school committee meeting because I feel like we need to keep talking to each other. And I hope, perhaps in response to Ms. Thibodeau, in a way that we can keep meeting and that we can start to move forward with the side proposals that were made as a way to actually do something and find out, can we do this? Is this going to work? Because that may lead us to be able to doing more. So I hope sincerely that we're going to start talking about those proposals because the sooner we do, the sooner we can make some progress. So that's, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Rhodes?
Hi, I'm Kristen Rhodes and I'm a special education teacher in the building blocks program at Fort River. I think, like everyone else is saying, this week was really hard. I think that I felt the same feelings of hope after our last meeting and positivity. I felt hope after our members' meeting on Monday, where although we didn't have the mandate to reopen the M O A, we, we did have great movement. And, and we voted unanimously to move forward with the preschool and intensive needs program side letters. And, and that felt wonderful and hopeful and like we were starting to move in the right direction. And the spirit around that was we, we really need to figure out ways, like this group was talking about, of meeting our most at-risk students right now and finding solutions, safe solutions, to helping those who are not able to access the remote learning in the same way, to find solutions for them and to get them what they need. And it felt very hopeful. When I was watching the school committee meeting on Tuesday, I, I started feeling pretty positive around the dialogue around the in-person learning. And then I felt pretty great disappointment when the motion passed for the mandate for the superintendent to push all students in in February. It, it felt like we've just lost what we were building. I started worrying about the intensive need students and preschool students actually being able to get in. Soon, I started worrying about what that meant for our staff members who did volunteer and would essentially be doing that outside the M O A if we hadn't changed the M O A. And so I felt a lot of worry. And I think this week, the positivity that came from this week for me was the A P A membership really opening up communications and coming together in the moment and many voices being heard and having support of the whole membership. We were able to call a meeting hours before this meeting and we had members arrive giving their input and giving responses. And, and I think that felt promising, just that so many people are so deeply invested. Whether, it didn't matter what their opinions were, but they're so invested in helping find a solution for this. As far as moving forward, I, I just think we need to, to be really transparent with each other of our intentions. I think we have to communicate with each other before communicating to others. And I think that we need to remember that even though we might have different ideas of how to get there, our goals are the same. Our goals are to get kids learning safely and in person as soon as we can. And I also don't want us to forget the pandemic's role in this. And, and to bring it back to that, you know, I think it's really easy to bring back everything that's happening to. Kids are suffering because of remote learning. They're suffering because of a pandemic. And we're all doing the best we can to address the situation. And, and I want to bring it back, there is our, our center in solution finding due to the situation we're all in, this really hard situation.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that everyone who wanted to respond to that prompt has had an opportunity before we move on to the next. Ms. Patel?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Patel and I'm the math coach at Wildwood and I'm also the treasurer for the A P E A. I just have a very short statement that one of the important pieces of the side letters is that those proposals are coming from the staff. Those proposals are coming from the teachers who are there, the staff who are, who are working with those students. And so just to, as a reminder that this, like my colleague said before, that this process takes time because you have these really thoughtful staff members who are thinking outside of the box, being creative, trying to figure out how do we do this together safely? And I think we already stated in the last, in the, if you read the notes from the last meeting we had, and I believe that you stated it also, Dr. Cunningham, that teachers, staff, they want to be with the students. I mean, that's why we have the profession that we do. So, you know, we, like Ms. Rhodes just finished saying, the pandemic has created a big mess for us. And the only way we're going to get through it is with patience and time and creative thinking and collaboration.
Thank you. Ms. Seeger, before you go, Ms. Patel, you just reminded me of a clarification I wanted to make from the last meeting. I am not doctor, it's just Ms. Cunningham. So for everyone in the community, my mom would love it if I were, but I am just Ms. Cunningham. Thank you. Ms. Seeger, please go ahead.
Sure. I felt after hearing about the, about not reopening or talking about the memorandum of agreement again, I felt disappointed, like others in the school committee have said. I know there's the side letters. I felt concerned about those because of the timeline and how long it's going to take to go back and forth. I'm concerned about a series of these letters that could take months potentially to work out. I'm concerned because we've been asking to renegotiate for months now. So I'm really glad that we're talking, but we've been asking for a while. And so I'm just really concerned that the process is going to take a very long time. So in that sense too, I've been frustrated. I've also been really curious. A lot of what we talk about at the school committee is out in the open. I realize we have executive sessions for working out contract negotiations and things like that. But our communication, like the other night's meeting, is all out in the open. But, you know, so we don't know, I don't know what goes on at the union meetings. I probably shouldn't, but I'm curious, so that feeling is there. I'm concerned in those 31 pages of comments the other night about parents saying that they're looking and considering options for the fall, which takes more students out of our school for however long. That concerns me budgetarily because of what might happen, what other cuts might happen. And those are my personal concerns. And I, I am so, given the whole week all around, I'm really mixed on things. But I am truly appreciative that everybody is here tonight to talk about it because I think that's, in terms of what's going to move us forward, that's definitely going to help. Sorry, I'm reading my notes. It's definitely going to help. So I'm, I'm just really grateful everybody's here and that we're talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a final, is there anyone who would like to speak who hasn't had an opportunity as yet? Or Ms. Todd?
Hi, I'm Margaret Todd. I'm a parent educator at Wildwood and Unit C Chair for A P A. I just wanted to voice my opinion. I feel like, I feel very unheard, I guess, is how I want to say. I feel like the last meeting, we all came together and it felt collaborative. And I felt like everybody gave beautiful statements about, you know, the process in which we do the things that we do and how it gets done. And I feel like the school committee just didn't hear what we had to say. And they, and it just felt like the, the letter that was put out was blind, was kind of blindsided, not just to me, but I had other teachers asking me that the wording, what does that mean? Does that mean everybody has to volunteer? It just felt very, the language was very ambiguous and very broad and it made everybody go into a panic. And I just felt as a, as a union member, as a staff member, as a community member, as a parent, I felt very unheard and that my opinion or the opinion of people in my position like me doesn't matter. And the families that are the loudest get heard and the families who are not the loudest get thrown away. And I would like for us to go forward because like everybody said, we all have the same goal. These kids are, are our hearts and we want to see them succeed and thrive and be the best versions of themselves. But you guys have to understand that it takes, it's a, it takes a village. Where the A P A is a village and it takes us time to talk about things. And, you know, it's going to take time and I know it's a worry, but it just is what it is. And I just really hope that we can do something so that the kids in our community have better.
Thank you for that. Once again, I just want to make sure everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to do a time check. It is 6:15 and I know that we were scheduled to end at 6:30. However, I felt it was very important that everyone had an opportunity to just talk about how they felt. Because like I said, there were so many things that happened this week. One with the, the survey and the A P E A members deciding not to reopen the negotiations on the M O A. I know a lot of people felt a certain way. And then once they got the letter about directive to the superintendent, I know a lot of feelings were also opened with that. So I knew that for this call, regardless of what, it was going to be important just to hear how people were feeling and just to make sure that we were ready to start talking about how we move on. I didn't hear many say that they did not want to move on. There were stipulations as far as working towards building trust and having more conversations and making sure that things are transparent and communication is occurring before information is sent out. So those were the things that I heard that people on this call would like to see happen so that we can continue to remain open and do what's in the best interest of our kids and reopen in schools. So the next prompt that I had was that knowing that some educators and families, families in the community are looking for that safe return to buildings for the staff and students, what protections, I know we have that side letter, but what protections are you asking the district to ensure is in place? And what protections can you currently ensure from the side of the school committee? What protections can you currently ensure will be in place? So knowing that the side letter is there, I know the A P E A would like to also hear from the school committee as to what are your plans in regards to the side letter? So I know that's a lot. And I, once again, we only have about 12 minutes to start the conversation, but I want you to know that we don't have to get to everyone tonight because there is another meeting scheduled for next week. Okay? So with that being said, I'd like the school committee, Ms. McDonald, to talk about the protections that you can, that you can ensure will be in place for the safe return to staff.
Thank you. I just want to say again, thank you, everyone, all of you, for, for showing up. I share Ms. Seeger's sentiment. Truly grateful that you're here. And that's a real testament to the strength of your organization and your, and your courage to, to come forward even with all the strong emotions that you, that you all described. So I appreciate that. I'm going to answer the question and then, and then also cycle back to clarify a couple of things. But the, the question about the protections, in, in our minds, we, we worked really hard or our bargaining teams worked really, really hard to come to agreements for health, safety and health protocols and protections in our, in our existing M O A. And in our minds, that they still hold and we're committed to those. There's no, in our minds, the, the, those health and safety protocols and protections that, that we agreed to and settled in our M O A are still very much the ones that we hold and expect the district to abide by in, in any situation of in-school, in-school buildings, in-person education. So I apologize that that wasn't sort of understood, but I hope that through us saying that, and I'm sure that, you know, as, as the other, my colleagues on the school committee speak, that you'll hear the same from them as well. We have no intention of backing away or changing those, those particular protocols and protections that are in there. But I do want to cycle, oh, and I think the other question was about the existing side letters. We, we are looking at those and you will have a response probably before our next meeting and sort of like, and how we're going to move forward in that. So we're not ignoring those by any means. But I do want to go back and clarify, because I've also heard not, not just tonight in this meeting, but some misunderstandings or, and confusion as you all have expressed, but I've heard that also from, from others in what we, what we actually were asking for in, in the, in the motion that we voted on. The, and that discussion and that potential vote was in, in our public document and I believe communicated in email as well. But the, the motion does not actually say all students in February. And I, you know, I understand there's a lot of, it's like a really complex, multi-level motion. But just to read it, it's as many students as possible within the safety guidelines of public health officials. And then it says, starting in February. So we're looking for the superintendent in collaboration with, with this group as well as the community to define what that looks like. And so if it looks like that we're bringing in pre-K and higher needs in, you know, in February and other groups will come in later, then that's a decision that has yet to be made as part of sort of the implement, you know, figuring this out. So, and we recognize that all students may, you know, not all students want to be in person or, or can be in persons. We know that as well. So going forward, the complex decision-making process and implementation planning process, but we're hoping that it begins in February. And as Ms. Seeger commented about taking time, and we, we recognize that it takes time. And at the same time, And at the same time, we have a community that's been waiting for these conversations and this discussion and these creative solution finding to be beginning since October. And so, we want it, we want to work together. We want to sort of get, get ideas on the table. I've heard some ideas from teacher conversations that I've had over the past couple of weeks that are really interesting ideas that I think definitely would be, we should lift those up as we begin looking at how we're going to do this going forward. But just to be clear, our community is not quite, does not have the same kind of patience level at this point for a drawn-out, like, really in-depth, detailed collaboration at this point. It's taken us three months just to get here to where we're talking to each other. If we, if it takes us another three months, that's, our, our community and our families are not going to be thrilled with any of us at that point. And it does worry me, like Ms. Seeger mentioned, about the future of our district, frankly, if, if we, if we can't sort of work a little bit more quickly than we have been.
Okay. And I'd like Ms. McGee to respond to the prompt.
Thank you. I think that, that we have been moving forward actually pretty well. I like to remind people that it was requested that we reopen the negotiations during the same week we signed. And so, for us to have gone through the Herculean effort that so many members worked on, to then being asked to directly after that reopen again. I will say that as, as far as working together, I found that the work that we've been able to do with Mike and Doreen, Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, we've been able to communicate really well, not just the executive board, but also in the, in the, a part of the, the MOA was to create a safety committee that was joint management. And I think that we've created a really good working relationship in that aspect. And we were really looking forward to building a good working relationship with the school committee. Our issue, we obviously have different responsibilities in our decision-making process. And so the issue is not, you know, we understand that we have different constituents. However, it really has been how it has communicated. There are, you know, issues that, that we disagree with, with the superintendent and assistant superintendent. However, I will tell you, you know, Mike is pretty good about saying, and Doreen are pretty good about saying, okay, and communicating what they need to communicate with us. It's not something that we have to hear through the media, and it's not something that goes directly into our membership. And I, and I, and so, I want to be clear that we understand that, that there's a difference in constituency. But the issue for us is in how, how the communication happens. And often we feel sideswiped or thrown under the bus because the communication is happening either in the media. And in this instance, which was really upsetting to us, is that it went directly to our membership, considering that we're the exclusive bargaining agent. And so we really felt that that was, it, it needed to be communicated to us first. And there's also this continuing, and I'm even hearing it here tonight, this continuing narrative that there is some difference between educators and the community. We are the community. We are parents. We are activists within the community. And so we have the utmost concern for the safety of the community, which is why we put this in place. I think Kristen said it best is that understand that, that the reason we're going through all this is because we're in the middle of a pandemic. A pandemic that has taken so many lives in America. So, and I understand the, the urgency and, and parents to want children back into the classroom. We do too, but not at the cost of safety, not at the cost of the health of, of the community. And so I just want to make sure that we keep that in the forefront. Yes, we all want to be back in the classroom, but we want to be back in the classroom in a way that ensures the safety of everyone in the building, in, in our, in our school buildings. And I also like to say, I, I look at this as an opportunity for us to come together during difficult times. This is what the community needs to be doing. We know that, that there's been so much trauma. I mean, there's a pandemic going on. There's also a lot of social unrest that's going on, that, that, that we are having to, to constantly, we're being fed, you know, things in the media daily. And so we have so much trauma that we're managing to try to be pushing forward, even when we have to do this in a thoughtful way. We have to do this in a thoughtful way. You know, when our students are back in the buildings, you know, what are we going to be providing for them? Not just the safe health and safety, but there's a social, emotional piece that comes to them being back in the buildings too, not just for students and staff and the community. I mean, we're, we're, we're all kind of a little bit broken at this point. So, that is why we feel like this cannot be a rushed process. We need to really collaborate and work on this together. And I believe we can do it. You know, I believe the more brains involved, then the more we can get to where we need to be. And I think in our, in, in our other committees where we're working together, JLMSC, I think that we have a good working relationship. Recently, we started meetings with the Superintendent Assistant Superintendent, and those meetings seem to be going well. I'd like to see the same thing happen here.
Okay. Thank you. So, Ms. McGee, in addition to many of the things that you were saying, one of the things that I think I heard is one of the protections that you would like us to ensure is in place is transparent communication from everyone here at this table. But the, it is now 6:29, and that is the prompt that when we start back next week, Thursday, that we will continue with. Because for this, there are many people who will have to go on to the Pelham School Committee meeting, or would like to hear that. So, it's not that I, I would, I feel that we, the conversation is going nowhere and I'm ending it. It's that right now, I know that a lot of people do have other obligations at this time. But it's very important that when we meet back next week, that we continue with this conversation, with that second prompt, and with keeping everyone in mind as far as the safety and the protections that we're looking at so that all who wishes to can return in a safe and healthy manner. So, I do want to thank everyone for showing up and being here because it was important, even though there were things that made you feel like violated, unheard, unseen. There's still hope, right? There's still hope because we all came, and we're all here, and we're still talking. And so I do thank you all for that. And with that being said, I'd like to turn the meeting back over to Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. And I will make a motion to adjourn the regional school committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by McDonald, second by Spitzer, and a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The region school committee is adjourned.